Yeah, quick weather update. It has started a flurry outside, but there's still no accumulation on the sidewalks or anything yet, so, so far so good.
Okay. So I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing execution of a letter of credit with Midland State's Bank guaranteeing payment to Philadelphia Insurance Company.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Arivolo. May I have a second, please? Second by Flurry. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing not all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Burton? Burton? Do, is anyone on the phone?
Is, is anyone on the phone?
Don't those calls only last for so long? There might be a time limit.
Maybe, could be.
Welcome and thank you. You entered one. There are six participants in the conference. Please announce yourself.
... knows where she's at and what's going on and stuff like that, so.
Hey, Dan, we're back on TV. What's the last thing you guys heard? Where do you need me to start?
Um, the last thing I remember was Woody was talking about getting the vehicles and talking about the warranty and how getting the vehicles under warranty has been paying off.
Yeah, that, that was it.
Okay.
He said he had 11 vehicles under warranty. That was the last thing I had.
I think I followed that up with, are there any questions?
I just had a question for Becky.
Please proceed.
Between these two budgets, um, you know, as we all know, we did not raise the tax levy for the city this year for the taxpayers, but between just the police and fire, um, we have raised their budget over $400,000. So since we didn't raise the tax levy, where do you think this money, extra money, is gonna come from?
Well, and we still have other budgets to go, um, and this is what I said, it's gonna be an issue between the salaries and the pensions increasing. Um, this year, I'm hoping that the increase in the, uh, gas tax that you approved last year and that we started receiving funds for in June, I'm hoping that that will cover it. Um, I'm not to that point yet. I'm still, um, looking at some of the revenues. Usually by now, the state has given, uh, the municipalities some of those revenue numbers that, that we use for our budgets, and we do not have those yet, so if I don't have them really soon, I'm gonna have to, uh, guesstimate and use my own numbers. But, um, I'm not to that point yet, but I'm hoping for this year that, uh, that gas tax will cover us, but that will only cover us for this year. So, and, and, and I'm hoping it's cover us, and if it won't, then we're gonna be looking at going into our reserves.
Or realistically, um, a lot of things in these budgets are, um, not going to be able to be purchased. They're, they're just not gonna be, um, able to be afforded.
Oh, right, yeah, absolutely. To, to a certain point, you can, you can forego some capital expenditures for only so long, um, but yes, that would be something that we'll, we'll have to look at.
Will the, having gaming back in place help?
These two alone are, uh, close to pushing a half a million, so, um, I, I know we still have more to go. Thank you.
Okay.
Alderman Burton?
Please proceed.
Chief, I, I don't know, were we done with the police presentation then?
Uh, not knowing exactly, uh, how much of the, uh, capital expenditure, uh, information you had received, uh, that was the last thing that I was commenting on. If you had any questions regarding the, uh, the squad cars, uh, obviously I'll be more than happy to field those.
No, it was just on the entire police budget and only because, and I know you already kind of addressed this, and you said it's lower by about 6,000 plus, uh, just because I asked of the fire guys, um, I know it's not the funnest question to answer, do anything off the top of your head, if we had to make any cuts to the police budget, could you throw anything out there?
Uh, the one thing that, uh, we would have to visit would probably be something that we don't have yet, which would be that, uh, part-time community, uh, service officer. For the most part, uh, everything else in there i- is something that, uh, for the police department either operationally or, or otherwise is, uh, is gonna be a necessity for us, uh, potentially at some point.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Welcome.
Uh, well, then I had one more question, I guess, before we, if we're gonna wrap this up.
Go ahead.
Yeah, it's along the same lines as Alderman Freeman was just mentioning, so I think it'd be beneficial for all of the aldermen to have the entire budget, and I'm, I'm okay going through it, you know, bit by bit, week by week, but I think we should have the old, the whole budget, and I'm requesting that, get the entire budget so we can see the whole pie.
And, and I'll respond to that. If you wanted that, it would probably be the end of February before you'd ever get to start looking at your budget. I don't have that done. It's done in segments. Um, I'm one person trying to finagle a lot of different things, and this is how we've been able to get it done, um, is, is in pieces at this point. And I don't have a lot of the data yet to get it to you any sooner. Um, if I was to present you all of the general fund data right now, you'd only have eight months' worth of actuals from last year. So the longer I can wait, I can keep adding the actuals in there and give you better numbers to work with for next year. So, that's kinda how we've been able to operate, where you see pieces of it today. Um, two weeks from now, you're gonna see public works and you're gonna see community development, and at that following meeting, which is the first or the last meeting in, uh, February, is when you'll get to see the entire, uh, the entire budget put together. And I really can't get it to you any earlier than that, at this point, being by myself.
Well, I know that's not how it was done in the past, and I am requesting that each alderman gets the entire budget, like immediately, before we proceed.
Mr. Burton, I think the finance director has explained competently and in full the position that she is in, uh, to produce the budget. And we do the budget the way we've been doing the budget for the past seven years, and we have had a balanced budget every single year with very few mistakes or errors found along the way. And so we'll go with that, and she cannot fulfill your request at this time.
Okay, but I haven't been an alderman in the past seven years, and this isn't how it was done in the past, and we're only getting one piece of the pie.
How was it done in the past?
I wanna see the entire pie.
How was it done in the past, Alderman Burton?
I wanna see the entire pie. That's all I have.
Well, that's not possible to give you.
So this is gonna be like the library. Like I said, that's all I have. I request the entire budget for each alderman, please. Thank you.
Which brings us to the resolution authorizing execution of a letter-
It's been pieced meals like this 'cause it is a time-consuming process, and I don't have any issue with it. I get his point of wanting to see the whole thing, um, so you can get the grand scheme of, you know, how efficient or where the money's gonna come from or not come from, but it is a process, and this is part of the process.
Can we move on to item D? Item D is a resolution authorizing execution of a letter of credit with Midland State's Bank guaranteeing payment to Philadelphia Insurance Company, which is basically indemnity for things that we have on the ground like fuel tanks, et cetera. May I have a, a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Stevens. May I have a second? Alderman Porter, questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Burton? Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, which brings us to the category number five of other. First up, Rock Valley College has requested to waive the upsizing fee that they've requested to go from a two-inch to a three-inch water main. Um, Brad, you wanna talk about that? And, uh, Alderman Porter will excuse himself as he is a employee of Rock Valley College.
Yeah, I need to recuse myself for any discussion on this one, so there's no conflict of interest.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor. A letter in your packet came from, uh, School District 100, uh, request to waive the upsizing fee. Uh, they are working with Rock Valley College to redevelop the vacant ShopCo building into the Advanced Technology Center. Due to the significant increase in the initial scope of the project, RVC will need to increase the domestic water service from a two-inch meter to a three-inch meter. Uh, the upsizing is due solely to the increase in the fixture count for things like the eyewash stations, washpations, et cetera. They don't, they do not anticipate a significant increase in water and sewer usage, however, uh, with what was experienced during the operation of the ShopCo store. Uh, the cost difference between, for connection fees, uh, between the two-inch and the three-inch meter size is a total of $12,863, $6,270 for water, and $6,593 for sewer. Uh, it goes on to say, "We appreciate consideration of this request. RVC has greatly expanded the scope of this project from the original RFP, going from 50,000 square feet to 77,000 square feet, and they are including far more programming than initially anticipated. They have also made provisions to add automotive programming to Belvedere in coming years." Thank you again for considering this request. Greg Brown, CFO, Belvedere School District. Um, again, the council's call, if they want to waive this fee or not. Uh, we have waived these fees before, uh, mostly for Habitat for Humanity, uh, houses, um, but, uh, in this case, uh, this is a rare occasion, reuse of a, of a vacant building, uh, uh, expansion of our, uh, school offerings, uh, to the residents of Belvedere. Uh, so again, it'll be up to the council if they want to grant this request.
I'll entertain a motion.
Snow has a question.
Mr. Snow, may I ask for a, a motion first, before we ask questions?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Motion by Snow. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Second by Arivolo. Questions or comments? Alderman Snow, you have the floor.
So Brent, what is the true physical direct cost to the city, um, aside from the six grand plus for each sewer and water, um, which is a number that floats out there, but what is the actual direct cost to us for them to do this change? Is it a matter of there's a thousand dollars worth of meter changed out, or what's the scope there and who, who, if anybody installs that, and again, what direct cost do we have?
Okay, as far as the direct cost, if I understand your question correctly, um, I think they've already accounted for that in their agreement with Rock Valley College and the contractor to do the work. Uh, there will be a, the actual meter, it's physical meter, they'll get credit for the existing two-inch meter, and they'll pay the difference for the actual three-inch meter. I would have to go back and check the price books. I'm not sure off the top of my head what that price difference is. And then they will have to, um, increase the service size of the, uh, pipe as well coming into the building. So there's some additional construction costs that they are, um, have, according to the letter here, they have included, uh, in their contract with the contractor.
So at this point, firstly, I would think, um, approving this barring any direct costs from the city to swap out the meter, um, from one to the other, assuming we can use that two-inch meter later on in our existence, that they would pay that cost, and then we could waive the fee, 'cause, no offense, it is a, um, lack of another term, a, a fictitious number that we assign, um, and generally it's applied for new development, I would think.
Well, again, the, the, the whole purpose of the connection fee there is to, uh, at some point in time, every time you have a new connection to the system, you lose that capacity. So the connection fee, the purpose of that is to, to build up your funds in order to replace that lost capacity when it gets to the point that we have to, um, sink a new well for that additional capacity. So, uh, however, in this case, um, given the current climate that's out there, uh, work climate and business climate, economical climate, uh, having a, uh, utilized building space and having an increase from, uh, 50,000 to 77,000 square feet is a good thing for us, good thing for the community, and I wish they would say, I, their comment as far as not using it much additional water, I can probably, uh, uh, see to that. Unfortunately, I wish they s- they said they were gonna use twice as much water as of what, what used to be done, 'cause we could sure use the revenue.
Alderman Stevens.
So is the city gonna have to do anything physically, like dig, to do this, or just change the meter out?
Um, the, as far as the, again, go back to direct cost, RVC slash School District 100 has already built in the additional expense to go to the three-inch. The only thing they don't have and not included is the connection fee difference. So, physical costs, they've already, uh, they're already gonna assume those costs.
Go ahead.
So why is District 100 asking for this and not RVC?
They're acting as the general contractor for this project, which brought, which brought down the cost of it by $4 million, which is why we got the, why we got the ATC.
I have some questions.
Alderman Freeman, please proceed.
So, um, Mayor Chamberlain, I've, I've seen your ads, and they feature endorsement by Rock Valley College. So it begs to question whether this is per a political favor, because it can certainly be construed by the taxpayers as such.
It's being construed by you for your political purposes as such. It has absolutely no bearing in fact. What the, uh, endorsement was from the chair of the Rock Valley College is their perception of why we were awarded the contract is because as a community, we came together and came up with a plan and a community action that secured us the ATC.
Okay, so this is-
It's the reality of what happened.
This is a community college, um, that services the whole area uses. So, you know, I'm wondering if Rock Valley College has endorsed other mayors and subsequently approached them and asked their communities to waive fees.
I, I think we're getting off track here, but I'll answer your question. You would have to ask them that. I am not the chairman of the Rock Valley College Board, nor am a board member. I am simply the mayor of Belvedere. We put together a, a competitive bid. The bid offering was open to all of the communities and counties that they serve. Everybody was open to submit, uh, project. Our community submitted the project. Our project was approved. And this is a simple transaction of, of what we do in other instances, like for Habitat for Humanity, or for connecting up to another business or a house. There are certain times when it's in the best interest of the community, and the council has the ability to approve this or disapprove it. So the only thing political about it is your insinuation, which is totally out of order. Moving on, I have a motion and a second. Excuse me.
No, I'm not done. So, the letter from Greg Brown is actually printed on District 100 letterhead. So he's endorsing, um, this fee waiver of $12,000, and it, and to my knowledge, the school district has always paid their connection fees, so I'm confused as to why they are willing to pay their own only to ask for Rock Valley Colleges to be waived.
Well, again, I believe, I believe this is the mayor stated previously, that District 100 is acting as the general contractor on this project to provide the building improvements on behalf of Rock Valley College.
But they, they always pay their own when they're contracting their own, so I, I don't, I guess I'm just confused as to, um, the, the ties here.
You're not confused at all. You are absolutely being political, and that's what you do, which is fine. And I told you what the truth is. If you have any other questions, I suggest that you ask those questions of the school district and of Rock Valley College. So we have a motion on the floor to approve waiving these fees for Rock Valley Colleges-
Alderman Burton?
Alderman Burton, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, on the heels of the waiving the impact fees discussion, I thought it was on the heels, but now all of a sudden it seems like we're in the midst of it again, 'cause they're back for more. Now we have, now we wanna waive these fees. This is nothing more than more pay-to-play, and I'm not supporting it.
You have that right.
Alderman Snow would like to make a comment.
You have one vote as an alderman, and you are free to exercise it as you will. Alderman Snow, please proceed.
You know, I, I get everybody's point that they all think this is some kind of political wrangling, but to be quite frank, this is not a private entity like Chrysler, or a supplier to Chrysler, or somebody else who's in the business of making a profit and turning a profit. This is a school system. It's considered a nonprofit, just like Habitat for Humanity is considered a non-for-profit. It's a, uh, it's a service to the community. It's not a burden to the community. Um, I realize 12 grand is not, um, a, a drop in the bucket, but in the overall scheme of things, as it is, um, I can see where everybody has apprehension. You can also make a motion to reduce the dollar amount. Right now, it's on the 12 grand side or whatever it is, but at this point, it could be changed. Somebody could make a motion to reduce it. But the fact is that in the overall scheme of things, even if, uh, Brent is correct or not correct, that, that they wind up using more water at this facility, which I would imagine they would, than, um, ShopCo did, the city, because it is a commercial rate, actually makes more money on the overall scheme of things than water and sewer on commercial. Um, so it's not, it's gonna pay for itself in the long run. Again, connection fees are, um, a fictitious number put out there to help increase the fundage for the infrastructure need. In this case, we don't necessarily, in reality, probably will not have a huge impact on the infrastructure that we currently have. Um, it's not gonna increase our sewer plant to the point that we're gonna have to build out across the street. It doesn't sound like we would actually have to have a new well put in, um, but I think in the overall scheme of things, it's a good thing for the community. Um, and again, we're not talking about putting in a whole school. This is a, one relatively small structure, if you consider the size of schools. Um, so I would support just waiving the fee and moving on.
Well, I'd like to make something perfectly clear. Anything that comes before this council as a request of anything, whether it's letting go of the impact fees, or whether it's Habitat for Humanity, or whether it's this request, ultimately, the vote of the council decides this. I don't decide this. The only time I have the option of voting is if the council is deadlocked, meaning half of the council votes yes, half the council votes no. At that point in time, I exercise my duties as the mayor to break the tie, because I don't particularly agree with one side. That side's attacking me as it being some kind of political motivation is totally beyond the pale. So let's finish this. We have a motion and a second. Yes, Alderman Flurry.
Aye.
Alderman, Alderman McGee has a question.
You're third in line. First, we have Alderman Flurry, then Alderman Freeman, then you, Mike.
Right, so I'm not sure what the procedure is here, but since you have mentioned District 100 several times, and I'm employed there, I'd like to, uh, abstain from the vote or lose myself, or whatever the terminology is.
Okay. So we have two recusals. Alderman Freeman?
So I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to be political, as you've accused me. I, I mean, your name is plastered on the RVC endorsement, uh, and I, I'm merely just pointing out the obvious.
Alderman McGee?
Thank you. Yeah, I don't know if I should, uh, direct this to, to Brent or you, Mr. Mayor, but, um, do we know if RVC, uh, will not go through with the expansion from 50,000 square feet to 77,000 square feet, uh, without, uh, waiving the upsize fee?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if the mayor has any more information, but I do not know the answer to that question.
There has been no conversation to that effect at all. I've not heard, heard a thing. It was not, the, the request was not delivered to us as an ultimatum or anything else like that. It was simply a letter asking us to consider waiving the upsizing of the water from two-inch to three-inch.
But I guess I will add that, that was significant, I guess, uh, of them to make that request, uh, specifically because of the increased usage that they would like to take advantage of at that facility, then the increased 27,000 square feet.
Anybody else?
I just didn't know if they were gonna walk away if they, if we didn't waive it.
I think this is a done deal already.
We haven't voted, so nothing, what do you mean it's a done deal? I, I, okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Frank?
No.
Freeman?
Nay.
McGee?
Nay.
Stevens?
No.
Snow?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
No.
Two in favor?
The motion is lost. Moving on. Under B, we have a resolution for the release of certain executive session minutes pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 slash 1 et cetera. I have a motion to approve. I have a motion from Flurry.
I'll second that.
I have a second from Arivolo. All those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Frank? Frank? Freeman? Did we lose the call again?
I'm here. I'm here.
I'm here.
Well, we're asking for your vote.
I think she just needs to speak up a little bit. It's a little tough to hear, so.
Frank? Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion is passed, which brings us to the final item of the evening, item C, Public Works Sanitary Sewer Backup at 1305 West 12th Street. Brent, please proceed.
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in your packet. We were notified of a sanitary sewer backup at 1305 West 12th Street, and after finding the main line clear, we advised the property owners, Ken and Janice Anderson, that the backup was within their service line. The backup was contained fortunately in the basement with no damage resulting from the backup itself. However, they did not have use, use of their sewer line for, because it was, it was still backed up. Per our Section 114, 348 of our code, the city is responsible for repair and maintenance of the sanitary sewer lateral that's located within the public right-of-way, and the property owner is responsible for the remainder of the lateral outside of the right-of-way. This was changed back in 2000. The final version was amended in 2001. Prior to that, the property owner was responsible for the entire service lateral from the main to the house. But as of 2001, that, that point of demarcation was changed, where the city's responsible for the portions in the right-of-way. The, per our policy, the property owner must provide evidence that the repair is located in the right-of-way and not on private property. The Andersons hired Pearson Plumbing to complete the necessary work. Their proposal included a worst-case scenario of $3,900 if a new service lateral was required from the house of the property line. Pearson first made a video of the service lateral from within the residence, which a copy is attached, there was a copy of the invoice attached, and also two photographs. The first is a screenshot of the, of video, first video that's sent to us that was, was dark and inconclusive. Pearson was notified by our sewer, Water and Sewer Foreman that a better video was needed. There, Pearson then proceeded to excavate outside the residence and at the foundation and install a clean-out, which allowed the service line to be jetted and televised. The second picture attached is, is after that work was done, and, and it's quite obvious that there was a failure in the service lateral, location of which was in, was in the right-of-way. Therefore, the Water and Sewer Department then made the appropriate repairs. Pearson Plumbing's total bill for the work came to $3,054, which included $784 for jetting and televising, and $2,270 for the excavation and the, and the sanitary sewer clean-out. The property owners called, they were not happy that their bill was so large, when the break was in the right-of-way, and the responsibility of the city to repair. Having reviewed this matter, I think that better communication between ourselves and the contractor could have alleviated the majority of the costs on the property owner. Instead of having the clean-out installed right outside the, the house at the foundation, the clean-out could have been, could have been installed at the property line by our forces, and thereby alleviating that cost of the property owner. Our current standard for new construction is a clean-out at the property line for all sanitary sewer services, and that's, again, the point of demarcation for responsibility between the city's portion and the, the property owner's portion. Therefore, I would recommend that the property owner be reimbursed $2,270 for the repair of the sanitary sewer lateral at 1305 West 12th Street. Talking to the property owners, they wanted to pay the Pearson Plumbing bill in its entirety, and then receive the reimbursement from the city, so the owner should submit a paid statement from Pearson Plumbing prior to the reimbursement.
I have a motion to approve the payment.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Arivolo. May I have a second, please?
Alderman McGee will second it.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approval will, anybody have questions or comments? Excuse me.
I have a question.
Alderman Stevens?
So, this $2,270, that's replacing the cast iron from the foundation out, or what is that for exactly?
The $2,270, as it was explained to me, there was a section of pipe that was removed right outside the foundation, and then they brought the jetter in and the, and the televising, did that part, and then they put that section of pipe back, including a clean-out, a new clean-out installed at that location, right at the foundation.
Okay, so this is for work up by their house, not in, not in our?
Not in, not in the right-of-way, right. And like I said, if, if we would have had better communication, again, between ourselves and the contractor, we, I think we would have arrived at the conclusion that, yes, we would make that excavation in the right-of-way, install that clean-out, and then, per the, per what the current standards are, and then made the repair on us, or on them, depending on.
Now, how many houses in that area have this 12-inch clay tile going up? Because I've installed septic since I was 14 years old, and this type of tile is used in the septic fields, not normally going from a house to city.
That is correct. This house was constructed back in the mid-'60s, so we don't have any records going back to what that, what that standard was, and how that construction was. Basically, we have to respond to these instances on a case-by-case basis, and, and we do the best we can, and in this case, I think we probably could have done better.
Yeah, because these are fired, fired clay tiles that aren't glazed, whereas back then was available fired pipe that was glazed and had connectors on it. So, how many of these potential time bombs do we have?
Well, again, they don't happen too, too often, but when they do, then we have to respond accordingly.
Additional questions or comments? Who else did we have that had a question?
I have a question.
Alderman Freeman, please proceed.
So, Brent, so, per our policy, the property owner must provide evidence that the repair is located in the right-of-way and not on their property. So, they had Pearson make a video, and you guys, the Public Works, said that it wasn't good enough, and you needed a better one. So, that's when Pearson then proceeded to excavate the outside of the residence, and installed the clean-out and the service line to be jetted and televised, for which they charged this homeowner $784 to find out that it indeed was the city problem. So, can you explain to me why the $784 is not also reimbursable?
Because, again, per our policy, the property owner has, has to provide us that evidence, and that $784 would be the, be that cost. And in talking with the property owners, they were willing to pay for that cost if they were reimbursed for the clean-out portion.
I think $784 is a hard pill to swallow, just to prove to the city that it was our problem in the first place. I'm just saying.
Well, again, it's, it's up to council. If the council would like to change or amend, amend my recommendation, they're more than, more than welcome to do that. My discussions with the Andersons, based on what transpired, and I've given them a copy of everything that I've shared with the council. They were satisfied with that, and, but if you certainly want to amend that or make changes, you guys can certainly do that.
Alderman Snow has a question, then.
Alderman Snow, please proceed.
So, Brent, at this point, you're telling me that the Andersons are okay if the city goes ahead and does just the 2270?
That was their indication to me, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we're setting a precedence here, though, and, and not everybody, maybe the Andersons can, but not everybody is going to be able to afford $784, especially in this day and age, as an out-of-pocket expense. So, I would like to make a motion to amend, to include the $784 added on to the 2270 for a total of?
The total would be $3,054, then.
$3,054.
So, I have a motion to amend. Do I have a second?
Alderman McGee will second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, no, excuse me, Alderman Stevens?
So, we're going to pay for them to have work done on their property, and in the past, we've said no to stuff like this. So, we're setting a pa, a possible, that we're going to set a precedence that we're going to repair people's property to put in a clean-out that would, like I said, set a precedent that we'll do it for anybody.
Well, again, you have to remember, we've got to do these on a case-by-case basis, and I think had this, had this, had that, again, more discussion took place with the information that was available at that time, I think we would have arrived at the conclusion that the next, the city would have excavated the portion in the right-of-way, installed the clean-out, and made the, and made the necessary repair whereby the clean-out on the private property side would not have to have been installed. I don't think that's going to set up a precedent, because, again, the way the ordinance, the changes that were made to the ordinance, we have the requirement of, of repairing what's in the right-of-way. Property owner has the requirement for repairing what's on private property, and they have to provide us the evidence. So, there is going to be some cost involved for the property owner to provide that evidence, even if the, the break or the issue is located within the right-of-way. And that's, and that's that. Otherwise, if you, if you don't have that requirement in there theoretically, then when somebody has the same issue, we could go out and, let's check the main line, of course, first, see if the main line's not clogged, then it appears it's on the service lateral. Now, if we have to determine where it's at on the lateral. So, barring the ability of the property owner and the property, your sewer line usually has access to the sewer line from within the house, in, in the basement, in the lower level, to do that. And barring that access, if, if there's not a clean-out installed at the property line, like any new residence does, then you have to have access. And our only way to gain access to that line, then, would be to excavate out in the public right-of-way. So, if you do not require the property owner to provide you with that evidence, then anytime we get a call where there's a sewer lateral issue, we will be making an excavation and a dig at every single one. And that's not necessarily what we've experienced in the past. Like I said, and this one is a rather unique situation, and I think it could have been avoided again, and that's why my recommendation is what it is.
Well, that's what I'm complaining about, is this is on their private property for the 2270. It wasn't in our part of it. I personally think they should be responsible for it for themselves.
Well, but again, we, if, if it had played out the way I envisioned it, envisioned it to be played out, it would have been, we would have installed that clean-out at the property line, which is that point of demarcation. We're responsible for the clean-out at the property line in any new construction. So, thus far, then, the property owner would have avoided that cost, and we would have actually constructed that clean-out at the property line.
Well, I still don't see it, and I'm still not going to vote for it.
So, the property owner would have never had to incur the $784, correct, Brent?
Well, no, there was, there was still, there was still the, the evidence, and that was the evidence that was used to, to, to gather what it was, where, where the defect was. So, yes, there's still, there's still cost involved, again, to the property owner to provide that information to us.
Alderman Snow has a question or comment?
Please proceed, Alderman Snow.
So, in this case, Pearson Plumbing put a access toward the house, a clean-out, and then they were able to camera in and find where the deficiency was on the city side. And in an ideal world, in lieu of Pearson putting a clean-out by the house, the city would have put a clean-out by the sidewalk area, assumably, or whatever, property line, and would have determined, again, the camera still would have had to been made use of by the Pearson to determine which direction the clog occurred, but that in lieu of having the Public Works actually do the work at the sidewalk, in this case, now there's a clean-out by the house.
That's basically correct, yes.
And, and if the Andersons are okay negotiating this to the 27, 2270, I don't see, and I get Marsha Friedman's point about them not having to incur the camera cost, but it sounds regardless, there would have been a camera cost potentially to occur anyhow. So, I don't think if they've already, if Brent, if Mr. Anders, Brent Anderson, Public Works, has already negotiated a lower payout by the city to accomplish this mission, I don't think it's in the city's best interest to up the ante unnecessarily to pay an additional expense. So, I'll be voting no for the increase.
I have a question.
Alderman Frank, please proceed.
Who pays for this, Brent? The city's insurance, or do we pay out as, from our general fund?
Well, it's going to be coming out of the, the, in this case, it'll be coming out of the sewer fund, because it was a sewer lateral sanitary sewer, so it is not a general fund expense. It would be a sewer expense.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
So, where were we? I have an amendment to the original motion to pay the whole thing. May I have a second? We had a second. All those in favor of the amended motion to pay the entire bill will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
No.
Snow?
No.
Stevens?
No.
Arivolo?
Nay.
Brereton?
No.
Fleury?
No.
Frank?
Wendy?
Aye. I hit a mute.
Okay, one, two, three in favor.
Three in favor.
It's lost.
Motion fails for, to amend the payment. So, now we have a motion to pay the original amount offered by the city of, what's it, 2,200? $2,270. All those in favor will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
No.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
No.
Fleury?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion is passed. That was the last item on our agenda this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Fleury. May I have a second?
I will second that.
Second by Arivolo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and good evening to you.